Okay, we're recording. We're gonna start the meeting off with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There you go. Hopefully, everybody's been able to sign in. The fire access are marked if you have cell phones with you. We ask that you have them turned off so we don't get interrupted. And can we have a roll call?
Henry Hale.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Marian Alexander.
Here.
Patrick DuHane.
Yes.
Alexandra Forster.
Here.
Melanie Mar.
Here.
Alan Reese.
Here.
Brent Baker.
Here.
Brent Baker. Matthew Fabro.
Here.
All right, now can we have a motion that the meeting was advertised as required?
I'll make a motion.
In a second.
I will, sir.
And then we'll put a vote on that.
Henry Hale.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Marian Alexander.
Yes.
Patrick DuHane.
Yes.
Alexandra Forster.
Yes.
Melanie Mar.
Yes.
And can we have a motion that to approve last month's minutes? And we have the reading of those minutes.
I'll make a motion. In a second.
In a second. And we'll put a vote on that.
Henry Hale.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Marian Alexander.
Yes.
Patrick DuHane.
Yes.
Alexandra Forster.
Yes.
Melanie Mar.
Yes.
And I don't believe we have any other business.
No, sir.
Not clear. Okay. I'm gonna hand it over to Patrick. And I will be recusing myself from this meeting. You and your guys.
I'm also gonna recuse myself from this application. My office has represented the applicants for many, many years. We've worked on this project a little bit. And I've known the applicants for a long time. It's a way of business and personal relationship. So I will be recusing myself because this is the only application on tonight. See you guys next month.
I think you should stay for closing or closing.
They know how to find me.
All right, Mr. Chairman. We're gonna start with your permission. This is the field number 2299. RMS is representing Prime Link, now called First Light, and came in Taylor Properties. Properties located on southwest corner of New York Road and Kansas Avenue. Actual tax maps there. This is a use variance requesting to be allowed to develop said prime link property as a multifamily housing, which is not allowed use in the A2 airport district. So this is out on the base. So just to give you some clarification, this right here is Seton Catholic School. This intersection is New York and Kansas. We're looking at this parcel right here that's owned by Prime Link. You guys used to know it was probably up here. This right here is ARC on this corner. And this area over here is all of the city. So here you can see the zoning. So the green is neighborhood commercial. The city doesn't have a color on it. This is the Airport Two district. And then up here you can see the tip of the kind of beige color. That is a multifamily, unit density district is what it's called. So here's a little closer. You can see this right here is the old childcare center. It's now today's daycare center located here. This area here actually belongs to the what the base theater used to be. Now they have a business in that one there. This is an unimproved lot at the moment. It looks like today, all these big trees. Seton Catholics over here to the right, four-way intersection there. And here's what the applicant proposing. Aaron O'Yours.
Hello.
Hi.
Aaron Obvious representing Robert M. Sullivan and First Light tonight. So Prime Link was recently bought up by First Light. They purchased the property back in the early 2000s. Their goal of purchase was that, you know, they still, if you look on the left-hand side of the aerial photograph, that's where their offices and operator facility was when they were in operation. They bought the property in the hopes that their business would expand in the area. They eventually grow and expand their building and take over that parcel as well. That obviously hasn't occurred. So now they're looking at, you know, game bring the piece of property. So they purchased the property back in 2004 for about $190,000. And since that time, they have used, haven't used the property at all. They've, you know, done minimal maintenance for more than permanent maintenance, hedges, things like that. But obviously, they've paid taxes throughout the last 15, 16 years. So when you look at it, you know, obviously, the difficulty we have is it's zone A2. They listed the property with Century 21 for Ryan back in February. They've had three parties look at it just for inquiries. All three hinted at the fact that they liked it for multifamily development. But when they saw the zoning, they said, okay, it's not permitted for our company. And the fourth offer they received basically is by Taylor Properties, which again is also located to multifamily. So I think we've provided you a copy of that letter from, or a copy of emails from Century 21. I have another copy here. It basically just states that they listed it February. So, you know, on their website, basically have not received any inquiries to it. You don't have a big copy. It's from Scott Tate, who's Century 21, telling everyone it was listed and who's looked at it so far. Everybody who has looked at it has said for multifamily development. So the problem we have is right here. Okay. So with A2 development, if you look at the zoning ordinance, it does allow a variety of different uses. But multifamily is not one of them. It allows things like convenience stores and gas stations and churches. It also allows hotels, motels, but again, not housing. It is unique.
Go back to the zoning.
When you look at it at the intersection here, the gray is the A2. So, you know, as you think, as you enter the base from the road coming down New York Avenue, you pass Seton Catholic on the right-hand side. There in green, which is neighborhood commercial, that parcel is fully developed. But again, in neighborhood commercial, multifamily isn't allowed use. On your left-hand side, you have obviously all of the residential housing from the city of Plattsburgh. So on the right-hand side of northeast corner, we actually just developed 16 unit of multifamily on that parcel. Let's just come online last year. And then across the street, you have green as well, which is neighborhood commercial, where you have ARC, you have the banquet facility, you have currently the Y has bought the wellness center, but we're getting redeveloping that side. But again, multifamily is allowed in that corner also. So we are basically that first corner entering the A2 zone. And really, you know, we brought the project before this planning board to kind of get their initial input. And they kind of agreed that, you know, when they looked at the zoning of the airport, they kind of said, well, A2, you know, we'll call the whole area A2. And that extends all the way out to like Arizona and the flight line. So if you think of the uses that take place with more of an airport commercial zone, you know, we're at that transitioning section in that we really feel that a multifamily development on this lot would be something that is well-suited for the parcel, looking at what is the surrounding character of the neighborhood. When you look at adjacent multifamily housing, a school, you know, if you look off the kind of yellowish color on the top left, you know, that again is a lot of multifamily housing. Bless you. Yeah, you have a banquet facility that, you know, we see multifamily as that transitioning type use from more residential coming out of city area towards the commercial activities that you see closer to the flight line. So when you look at the state guidelines issuing the use variance, there are some specific questions. And, you know, one of them obviously is, you know, reasonable return or lack of, like having a user benefit by the applicant. So we had Derek was about prepare a study. Basically, in general, I said, so, you know, when you look at purchasing the property for $190,000, you look at what the taxes were over the last many years, you know, they've paid almost a little over $50,000 in taxes. So, you know, they have over $160,000 in the property already. And currently, they're selling it for $150,000 against the only offer they received since having it listed. If you factor in what the, you know, so right there's a automatic 6% loss in their investment. If you actually factor in the value of money over time, over the last 15 years, it's roughly 2.5% increase in place over that period, it's almost a 35% loss of, you know, money that they invested that, you know, they're losing on this. And when you say, oh, well, that's because they're selling it cheaper than the market, you know, currently has. Well, you know, it's been on the market now for, you know, many months, you know, it's been the only applicant. And there's actually a parcel just on the other side of First Light that's also in the A2 zone that has been listed for some amount of time for the same asking price, and they haven't received any offers at this point. So really, you know, when you look at that potential loss that First Light is receiving on this, and then, you know, supplement that when you look at what Mr. Rosenbaum did as far as looking at other uses, the current cost of construction, you know, what would be a reasonable return that really the multifamily use is the most viable option available. Then you look down at, you know, the next question, essential character, locality of the project. You know, here, you know, when you look at the locality, you know, and I think you can all understand, right? We're trying to build something, trying to put a house in the middle of a residential district. Doesn't make sense because the surrounding character, you know, you stick out like a sore thumb. You're the odd one on the block. Where here, you know, three of the four quadrants of the intersection, multifamily is allowed use. One of them has multifamily. And you look at a school and you look at, you know, the other type of facilities around it, it really does kind of fit with the neighborhood. And I think it actually fits better than things like a gas station, you know? So do you want a gas station next to a school? Kids may like it for a snack after school. But again, you know, I think the use has low traffic numbers. You know, it's not a retail store or some other auto body shop that's been bringing noise and a lot of traffic and outdoor stores, things like that. You know, multifamily residential is kind of probably the least offensive use, you know, for that in as far as its impact on the neighborhood. Then you also have, so that's essential character, you know? Then you look at, you know, unique situation. Again, you know, the parcel being, you know, the corner of the A2 district compared to all surrounding neighborhood commercial zones. So really, this, you know, it is unique to this one parcel that we're not trying to change the zoning to the district. We're not trying to be in the center of a district where we're just, you know, kind of spot zoning, you know, kind of saying, hey, it's a very similar use to what's around it. And then obviously, you have, you know, self-created hardship. Well, you know, First Light purchased it in the hopes to develop. At this point, they've yet to need it for that purpose. So they're trying to sell it. They've put it on the market. So it's not that, hey, they're just trying to do something. They're obviously trying to get rid of the property. They've tried marketing it. They've tried selling it. They have it listed with, you know, a commercial realtor in town. And to date, as I said, and per the email, you know, these are the only, only parties involved or looking at it are for multifamily development. And this is the only offer that we've had. So, you know, at this point, they're kind of handcuffed as to what to do with it because, again, it's the only offer they've received to date. So we're here tonight asking you for relief for a very unique thing that's the corner of a existing zoning district, very compatible to the surrounding neighborhood, and we feel would be a nice fit and transitional use heading down New York Road into what is obviously, you know, when you get closer to Arizona, almost in my mind, I think kind of like, you know, the railroad crossing or, you know, when you get to the City's Depot, that's where you kind of hit the airport industrial type use, you know? This is more of a residential feel, so. If you have any questions, stand further, we're happy to.
Sure. Describe the housing. Describe the housing that's going up. Is it subsidized? Is it?
This will all be privately owned, unsubsidized housing at market value, meaning, you know, we are truly looking at the 1,500 a month and higher rentals. So we're looking at, you know, spacious, nicer units.
Is it a bedroom or?
Probably a lot of twos. You know, it's finally ones are hard to sell because people like to have a sex spot for an office if it's a couple. In the same regards, we don't want to have a whole lot of threes because we don't see it really as, you know, the family spot. We see it more, prefer young professionals, retirees, things like that. Obviously, the goal is, you know, ownership of any type of facility like this is to have long-term tenants. We're not looking to have it. And I said, so there's no subsidized housing. It's a higher end of the market. And really, with today and the interest rates, you know, it's hard to do this as a project except we really think this is more of a upscale housing development.
Does traffic count affect it in any way?
I'm sorry?
Does traffic count as the amount of traffic on that road?
I mean, New York's a four-lane road. You know, there's a flashing light at that intersection. So what we're proposing for the site plan is that driveway is actually come off of, I think it's still Kansas. So we'd come off of Kansas, that way we would exit out and then you'd come to a four-way stop. So again, it wouldn't be, you know, high volume. You know, again, we're not trying to create a unique zoning here either, as I pointed out. We're trying to develop it in accordance with neighborhood commercial districts. So whether we want to develop it in accordance with what's allowed next door. So we're not trying to establish a new zoning that's different than everybody else around us. We're just trying to basically say, hey, shift that line a little bit over so we fall into that neighborhood commercial zone.
How many units?
Zoning allows up to 27, 28 units total. So again, fully compliant with neighborhood commercial zone. And the project would be developed over phases. What we're showing there is six units. We met with the developer and they thought about maybe shrink those down into fourplexes. It just allows them more flexibility to build them in phases as the market can absorb them rather than dumping, you know, 20 units on the market. And, you know, it's gonna be hard to fill that price range, you know, all at once. It allows it to be phased over time. And obviously, you know, if the board was willing to grant the use variance, we'd still go back from the planning board for the full site development, the landscaping, the lighting, and all the other components of the site development project. Anyone have any questions? I just thought I'd say that. And just, oh, we got four?
No. All the carrying portions.
Oh, yeah. Is it over with now?
No.
No.
You gotta open it first.
I gotta open the public, uh, public portion of the meeting to public hearing. Yeah. If anybody got anything to say, please step up to the mic and state your name and address.
Mike, that, that mic's not working, correct? We want you to possibly.
I'm Mary. I'm from. Hi. Can you hear me? I'm Mary Forbes, and I'm the principal of Seton Catholic. And I'm just wondering how this is going to affect my school. You say you're going to have your egress on the side road. That's where our driveway is and our entrance to our parking lot. So there's gonna be a lot of traffic in and out at certain times of the day. So I'm just worried about congestion there. And is there any age limit? There's no age limit on people able to live here? So I think you answered that.
Max or min or?
No. You know, since we are now on the other side, we have that multi-housing development there, which we have troopers there quite a bit. I'm just wondering, you know, how this is gonna go? Again, I'm thinking of my students. We have a playground right off that side road. And again, it's, I'm just worried about traffic and about people accessing our property, not in a bad manner, but just I have to be careful of my three-year-olds. And I just want to make sure everything is the way it should be. Yeah. So, I mean, we have people that are, we have students, we have the front yard, the trees, and students are out there playing and so on and so forth. Just worried about traffic and things of that nature. So should I ask you about that or not?
So majority of the questions you just asked aren't for this board. They're for the planning board.
Okay.
So when it comes to their details, so if they get the variance approved here, then proceed to detail plan at the planning board, there'll be a public hearing then.
Okay.
These questions will be brought up and asked for that. So circulation, you know, what, how are they gonna control, you know, kids coming from this development over to your school, playing your playground when they're not your students, you know, that kind of thing, you know? Those, all those questions get under detailed plan of the planning board.
All right. Since I've just sent something from the town saying that I should come in, ask questions?
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you. Anyone else? Now we'll close the.
Mr. Chairman, just to go down to the county planning board. And they voted nine, zero in favor of the action and no comment.
No issue. So I may add, just to, you know, as we mentioned earlier, you know, the client set we're looking to go for is not subsidized. We're trying to do a higher-end development. A lot of those issues we will be working through with the planning department as we move forward. But again, when you look at the use being proposed of multifamily, and you think of housing and the traffic it generates compared to what some of the allowed uses are for the property. So if you looked at a gas station or something like that, or motel that had, you know, 150 rooms or 200 rooms on it, that would all be allowed. A lot of those allowed uses would have a, we feel, greater negative impact on the neighborhoods compared to what we're proposing. But there, there was to be a lot of time for the public input and a lot of those items as far as I mentioned, landscaping, lighting, traffic, and those would be addressed to the site plan review, so. We gotta go through the.
Speaker. Speaker first. Brett's got the speaker. You'll read it off and you guys can answer.
Will the proposed action create a material conflict with adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? Know or small or moderate, or large impact? Will the proposed action result in the change in the use or intensity or use of land? Small impact, no impact?
Not a small impact.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
I don't believe so.
No. No, it's small. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area?
We don't have any, so that's enough.
Will the proposed action result in a diverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway?
Possibly.
Possibly is not an answer.
Right. We're discussing.
But is it, you know, minimal or not? So basically, what you look at, right, is how many units? I mean, maximum they could have 28. He talked about, you know, actually knocking that down a little bit. So when you look at the impact, say each house has one car at least, there's 28 cars, possibly two cars, you know, if it's a, a couple of them, each one has a car. But that is, they'll leave in the morning, go to work, they'll come back in the afternoon, you know, and evening. So over the entire 24-hour period, what's the impact of that traffic? So maybe a small to minimal, you know, opposed to you think it's doing a large impact. Like if that was a hotel, a 90-room hotel.
Yeah.
You know, now you got 90 cars coming in, 90 cars leaving, you know, every 24 hours or something like that. So that's how you.
Especially when the school's busy, but you'd have 90 cars leaving the motel.
If you have two bedrooms, it's also possible you could have an adult child who's driving as well, right? So you could bump up the cars a handful here, handful there. And if they're all leaving around the time that school's coming in session, that could be an issue for traffic congestion during, as you said, the busy periods of time around rush hour, rush hour, such as it is.
So we're left with the options of know, small, or moderate, large?
I, I mean, if the option is to choose moderate or large or know to small, I would default more to know to small, but I don't, more on the small side of know personally.
I agree with that.
Okay, so then I'll vote it. Know to small.
Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonable availability or available energy conservation or renewable, renewable energy opportunities?
Are there any renewable energy opportunities built into your plan?
No, but obviously with, you know, natural gas is available, so we use high-efficiency water, even current energy co-partments, so it'll all be up to, what's your departments available currently?
Not small.
Okay.
Will the proposed action impact existing, A, public or private water supplies?
No.
B, public-private wastewater treatment utilities? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historical, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
Have to say it out loud.
No.
Will the proposed action result in a diverse change to natural resources? Wetlands, water bodies?
There are no wetlands there.
No.
It's a treaty area, but it is supposed to be an improved lot, so.
No.
Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
No.
Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or even health?
We have to declare a negative declaration.
Yeah.
Negative declarations. I'll make a motion if that's a negative declaration on the speaker. Speaker.
Leave me alone.
Your hands.
Who's that?
Marian.
Okay.
Marian, that's fine.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Marian Alexander.
Yes.
Patrick DuHane.
Yeah.
Alexandra Forster.
Yes.
Melanie Mar.
Yes.
Okay. Now you can go through the list. I just want to point out one thing.
Okay.
When you go through your list, Aaron was talking about, you know, this being unique and that there was another one for sale. Is it, was it up here, Aaron?
Yep.
Okay. So keep in mind, you know, where this was located, what's next to it, where this was located, and what's next to it. Okay? Because if you don't come up with the unique reasons of why you're approving it, then when this person here comes in, they're gonna ask for the exact same thing. So you gotta, when you're going through and answering your questions there, tell us, you know, what makes this property more unique than that other property, you know? Okay?
Okay. So we're going through the use variance criteria right now. Cannot be realized, cannot realize a reasonable return substantial as shown by competent financial evidence. So we submitted our, we discussed about the cost of the lawsuit, property sale already, and all of this supporting documentation provided by Mr. Rosenbaum and his analysis. That's the proposed use is the only viable use to provide reasonable return.
Before we go over this, would it be possible, you've got the list over there of the things that are approved for this, can we just run through those quickly as a refresher?
Uh, sure.
I do too. I look. I look. There it is. Look at that.
Should be more than that page. Next page.
Next page. The next page. Are you available to prepare for my professional work now? Thank you.
Just thought it'd be easier for you to sit yourself.
Yeah. Hold please. Go on, I'm sorry. Need to derail a little bit.
All right. Led hardship news unique and does not apply to substantial portions of the district or neighborhood. This will need to discuss a little bit. So again, right, when we talks about, you know, the question itself was, you know, does it apply to substantial portion of the district? Well, obviously, it's not applying to, when you look at the overall A2 zone encompassing all of New York or all of Arizona and the whole bases, you know, the one parcel that is in the absolute corner of the district. And as I mentioned, is, you know, unique that on three of the four quadrants of the intersection, it isn't allowed use in that, you know, it is part of that gateway entrance that, you know, the residential is, has a more natural feel to that surrounding area that does, and any other portion that already has industrial use and or, you know, more in the middle of the district.
So, so if you're leaning towards approving, so what Aaron just said, right, the three, and this intersection, this corner.
Right.
Three sides of it already has allowed multifamily. The one, other one is for sale, there's only two sides that have it. The third side actually has a commercial business there.
Right.
So that would make this a little more unique than that other one.
Unless in one of the three. So all those allow, one of the three actually is multifamily. So it is identical to the use right across the street. Everybody okay?
Well, how would you differentiate the piece of property that you're talking about from as?
I mean, if you looked at the parts of the other side, that has, I think it's, you have Eagle Distributing, I believe on one side of it, which is the beer distributor. Right. Then you have the commercial, you know, Prime Link on the other side. So it has a rate, so some, both sides of it has commercial, has commercial behind it. So we've got three of the sides of that parcel have existing commercial development on them. Or only across the street on the one side, you have the school use. Where here, we have multifamily allowed on two sides and we are adjacent also across the intersection, you know, to multifamily. So I think we are much closer to that residential type use than the other parcel. Okay. Requested variance will not alter essential characters of the neighborhood? I think as we mentioned, you know, pointed gas station motel, I think would be more, something that's allowed would be more of a change from the character of the neighborhood. Any alleged hardship has not been self-created. Right. This is that, you know, the difficulty here is, you know, finally because, you know, First Light's trying to sell the property and as I know, this is the only viable buyer they've had look at the property. So I think it should be noted, though, that there's three other places on that intersection that are noted for that multifamily, right? Any other piece of property that they're talking about has a commercial on both sides. So does anybody want to make a motion?
I think, at least for me, while we're talking about unique characteristics also, it, it's, it is extremely close to the spot that we have, that you used to access the school. Which makes a lot of the allowed uses seem, to me at least, to be less appealing because they're going to have a lot of interday traffic and things that are going to be going right through there. Whereas here, as pointed out, quite often you're going to be going through in the morning and at night, much a more controlled atmosphere than if we had a drive-through restaurant, for example. I did have it, you were right about that.
Is there a flashing light at that corner or is it?
It's a, yeah. It's a four-way stop, four-way red. Yeah. Years ago, it used to be a red light, didn't it? Used to have the unworking red light. Okay, anyone for a motion?
Well, I would make a motion to approve the variance.
Right.
Noting that.
Unique.
It is uniquely situated with other residential properties surrounding it. And I think the point that you made is very good that, given that the school is right next to the property, there are a lot more, I think, A2 uses that would be detrimental to, to a multifamily unit.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, raise your hands. All against? Marion, please.
Roger Black?
Yes.
Marion Alexandria?
Yes.
Patrick DuHien?
Yeah.
Alexandra Forster?
Yes.
Melanie Mar?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I thank you also for last month in my absence, I think you extended the new song.
Yeah.
The new song, the G. Which is still available, but still, I suppose, it's not available.
Really?
So the city found offsets allowing development, but now the city wants compensation for that. Never end.
Anyone want to make? I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor? Good job, Andrew. Thank you.